Welcome, everyone, for our second day of budget workshops. It is Tuesday, July 26th, and we're going to resume right where we left off with enterprise funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. And before I get started in that, I just want to give you a little bit of the outline for the day. We're going to finish up the workshops today with the remaining funds of the city. We have enterprise, internal service funds, trust funds, debt service funds. And after that, we are going to look at our CIP program. Doug Jeffcoat is going to give you an overview of the five-year CIP program. Hopefully, if we are able, we can get through by 12. Otherwise, we'll come back after lunch. But when we finish our session with the CIP, we want to break for a couple of hours before we come back for the special meeting. And at that point, we will be setting a tentative millage. And also, we are taking the comments that you're making yesterday and today, putting them in a question format so that you can make decisions and give us direction on how you'd like to see this budget go. Any questions about that? Okay, so with that, I'll just jump into our enterprise funds. And these are funds where we have user fees that actually pay for goods or services. We have five enterprise funds currently. We have our water and wastewater utility system, the Van Waisel Performing Arts System, Center, the solid waste management, parking management, and St. Armin's paid parking. And you've seen this slide a couple of times. I've highlighted the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds have gone up $5.8 million, a total percentage of 6.46%. First enterprise fund that we're going to look at is the water and the wastewater utility system. We divide this up into four sub-accounts, as we call them. The revenue account, the renewal, replacement, and improvement account, the general utility reserve account, and the interest and sinking accounts. So the revenue account is where the user fees are placed and the operating expenses. The renewal, replacement, and improvement account is where we make major capital repairs and purchases. The general utility reserve account are where we keep the reserves for the utility system. And the interest and sinking accounts are our debt service funds for the utilities. The budget for the wastewater system, we are projecting a beginning fund balance of $25 million. We are also projecting revenues of $53.6 million. The expenditures will go to the water system, sewer system for collection costs and debt services, and those total $57.2 million with an ending fund balance of $21.6. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Rebe, who's the Director of Utilities, and take it away.
Good morning, Bill Rebe, Utilities Director. This slide highlights the, basically, the projects that we have ongoing today. So in the far-left column are projects that we've actually completed, pretty significant, sizable projects. The next column, there are projects that we'll complete by the end of this fiscal year, again, a pretty sizable list. And then, projects that will be ongoing will go into either FY '23 and some even to FY ' '24. And you can see that list is pretty extensive as well. The total projected cost of all of these projects on this sheet is about $110 million. So it's a pretty sizable amount. So we talked about that, you know, in 2019 with the master plan. We're delivering. We're actually out there trying to make the system better, make it more reliable, so on and so forth. We're looking for our customers. Of that total, about $23 million will be under contract by the end of this year, and we'll spend about $18 million this year, FY '22. The next slide summarizes the projects or major initiatives that we have for FY '22, '23. In the left-hand column, the majority of those projects are kind of what we call our annual programmatic projects, lining sewers, lining sewer laterals, lift station rehabilitation, all those kinds of things that we just, we need, on an ongoing basis, things that we need to do. And then, on the far-right-hand column, we're going to replace five to six segments of small diameter, usually it's four to six diameter pipe, water main, also the same thing for force mains. So we're trying to get that old stuff out of the system before it fails. And then, we've got asset maintenance management system we need to upgrade. That's what we use to actually manage our work, work orders, those kinds of things. So we do it in a very systematic, and we're able to capture all that data. And then, the billing software, Kelly's for the finance, to make sure we're doing that, and provide a little more robust interface with our customers so they can do more things online, so on and so forth. So that kind of summarizes where we're at, where we're going to be next year. Many projects are listed in our CIP, five years, and it's very, I think, at the end of the packet. If you have any questions about our five-year CIP, more than happy to answer any of those The next slide shows our projected rates and how we compare to other utilities in the area or in the region. So we're about a little above average in terms of rates, but we're in the middle of the pack. So we remain competitive. No real changes there from last year. The next slide, what we try to do is, these are, we reached out, and we try to every year, reach out to other utilities in the region, just like the previous slide. But this, what it does, it summarizes what the rate increases will be, what other utilities in the area will be doing in terms of rate increases. And there, we're actually below average. So a rate increase that we intend to do this year, or for FY '23, will actually be less than the regional average.
Before you leave us, I, me and Commissioners, again, we get a lot of, you know, comments about our rate increases, how impactful it is on our rate peers. But when you look at the other jurisdictions and the things that they're doing in terms of capital improvements, there are rate increases, you know, that are going to be realized in those communities as well. You know, a lot of individuals, you know, look at just the city of Sarasota and say, you know, no one else are going to be having rate increases. But, you know, Mr. Rebe did some research to kind of take a look at what's going on. I will tell you one thing that, you know, again, thanks to this commission, you know, in terms of the master plan and capital improvements that we are undertaking, in terms of replacing a lot of our infrastructure underground, lining the infrastructure underground, I mean, I'm hopeful and I'm praying that, you know, we don't have a spill, but we haven't had a spill in how long, Mr. Rebe.
You just jinxed us. Now, we're going to... It's been, no, it's been two years. We've had a really, our crews have done a great job. So it's a combination of replacing stuff, and then also, our crews are doing a great job out there, making, giving things, taking care of issues before they happen. So you knock wood, we're, you know...
Yeah, but the only reason I say that is because of the robust master plan, the, you know, the proactive effort that we are undertaking, thanks to this commission, in making that tough decision to have those rate increases, you know, so we can get ahead of a lot of the issues that other communities are seeing in terms of spills, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't mean we wouldn't have one, because we have contractors out there that go out and do things that may not necessarily, you know, help us in terms of protecting our infrastructure, but at least we are trying to be proactive and getting ahead of, you know, a lot of the issues. So the rate increases, as painful as it may be, again, if you live in other communities, you'll be getting those rate increases, maybe even much more than what we are anticipating.
Can you let us... Yeah. Just to make it clear, when you're done with the section, so that we know that we have to ask questions.
Yes, you have room. That's the length.
We just got done with water and sewer utility systems, correct?
Right.
Okay. Interfund transfer of $6 million, where's that from?
Debt service.
Well, that comes, yes.
Debt service. As I mentioned in the beginning, there's four different sub-funds, and it's an intra-fund transfer from the revenue account to debt service.
So the budget decreased from last year?
Actually, the total budget actually went up. So this year, we're...
Yeah, but I'm just talking about this one, the water, sewer, utility.
Overall, yes, it did decrease.
Because of the increase in rates?
More of the capital improvement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But actual fixed, semi-fixed costs, that'd be O and M, or operations and maintenance, sorry, I use acronyms. But the operations and maintenance is up about, so the fixed, semi-fixed costs, that's operations and maintenance plus debt service, is up about 5.4% year-over-year, okay? Revenues are up about 4.4%. So one thing we really keep an eye on are those fixed and semi-fixed costs. We never, ever, ever want to get into position where we're having to borrow money just to pay operations maintenance, those semi-fixed and fixed costs. That's...
And we're doing three-and-a-half percent increases for 10 years to pay for that large, large capital improvement project. At the end of those 10 years, do those rates go back down?
So at the end of 10 years, we reevaluate, and if they don't need to go, continue on, then that'll cease. But that, the ordinance only goes through the end of fiscal year '30.
And what happens at the end of fiscal year '30 if you don't reevaluate?
Then we have to come back, because the ordinance only, it's literally every, there's a table in the ordinance that shows every single year what the rates are for every year. So in FY '30, we'll have to come back, and that'll have to revisit everything in terms of rate increase, no rate increase, so on and so forth.
So it looks like, what do you think our fund balance is going to be at the end of this year, at the end of fiscal year '23?
Somewhere around, we're projecting somewhere around, I think, $25 million?
Twenty-one million.
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
Of '23, so basically...
Twenty-five is the beginning...
Yeah.
...at the end of this year, and then at the end of '23, 21.
So, okay. Because I'm looking at prior years, I'm looking at 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, and it appears that the year that actually had a net profit was 2020 and 2021, with the other years' expenses exceeding by 6.3, 3.5, yet the fund balance seemed to go up. How does that happen? We were operating at a net loss, but the fund balance went up from 2021, '22 to '22, '23.
Okay, what you're looking at, the 2021, those are the actual, those are the audited numbers. And ending fund balance is $52 million?
Mm-hmm. That's in '21.
Right. Now, the column over, the '21, '22, that is a budget column. So these 52 million in budget, if it's appropriated to a project, it doesn't carry over, we assume that it's spent.
Okay.
Because it stays with the project.
Got it.
Right. So the '21, '22 is this year's budget, this year's adopted budget. And then, the '22, '23, of course, is our proposed budget.
No, Mr. Rebe, I mean, you've all done a great job. I see that, you know, expenses for personnel went up a reasonable amount, it wasn't anything crazy, less than 21 actual. Operating expenditures did not increase too much, capital expenditures are sort of in line with where they should be. I mean, that's probably the one that went up the highest by a hundred and some thousand dollars. So just thank you for, thank you for your attention and detail in all this. Commissioner Harkotch.
I just had a question on page 36, 8. It says, "Bad debt expense." And it went down significantly, but I'm not familiar with that.
So we have the utility billing office. We send out utility bills, those that do not pay, we send them to a collection agency or else put a lien on it, and then eventually, it becomes bad debt, and we record it and write it off.
Okay. Okay, so... 22 it was, and you're projecting it to be lower.
And that's a good thing.
That's a good thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of that may have had to do with, you know, the pandemic, when people may not be able to pay.
And explain, sorry, just clarify, what do you, bad debt, how do you qualify something as bad debt as opposed to just regular debt?
If it hasn't been paid within the past year, it's, we need to write it off.
If you haven't...
Every year, when we have audit, we make an adjustment for the bad debt.
And this is bad debt, this is like accounts receivables?
Yes.
Got you. Got it.
That's it.
All right, and then Vice Mayor Batee.
Another, just a comment, just to compliment you and your crew. My neighbor had a leak in his line, you know, a few weeks ago, gave me a call that morning, and called me later that afternoon. that afternoon and said that it was, you know, they were out there and took care of it. I had the same thing a couple of weeks ago, and I made a call. You all were out there promptly, just like that, came out and took care of it, you know, so, you know, that's compliments to your leadership, and I just want to compliment you all on that. Say thank you.
All right. No more questions?
One more.
Commissioner Harkotch?
And I'll just take this opportunity as well to say thank you for doing a great job and for being proactive. It was, you know, it wasn't an easy decision for the commission to make, but as you all know, I serve on the Sarasota Bay Estuary, and I'm on the Utilities, Natural Resources, and Public Works for Florida League of Cities Policy Board. And the city of Sarasota is constantly lauded for having, you know, the best in Florida's advanced wastewater treatment system after Disney World. And, you know, it's just something that I think that, you know, there are times to pat yourself on the back publicly, and to continue to pat yourself on the back, and this is definitely one of them. I think the last thing we and our citizens want to do is to read about, you know, the city contributing to the degrade degradation of the environment, and knock on wood, again, this is a wooden table, we haven't had to do that. And so I'm really, I'm really proud of what we've accomplished. So, thank you.
No further questions, thank you. Next section.
All right, our next fund is the Van Waisel Performing Arts Hall. This is tab 37 and slide 30. So this budget has a beginning fund balance of $11.2 million, anticipated revenues of $13.4 million, and then expenditures of $16.3. The ending fund balance is projected at $8.3. This budget proposes three additional positions for fiscal year '23. One of those positions is two part-time people who are converting into one full-time.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any questions?
Question phase. So you believe your revenues are going to remain the same from last year?
Well, we're certainly hopeful. COVID is not over yet, and we're looking at trends on Broadway, as well as the other arts groups in town. And we're very hopeful, we have some really positive programming, and we were able to secure Disney's Aladdin, which is a big blockbuster show. And then something that you've all been asking for, for a long time, is to bring in programming for younger people, and I don't mean children, I mean teenagers to the 25-year-old, 30-year-olds, and we're bringing in a huge production of Mean Girls in April. And so we're very hopeful that things will go back to normal, not necessarily next year, but the following year, when we have a mega Broadway season, which I can't really talk about, because it's a big announcement.
Well, there's no better place to make it than here.
I know.
Guide me, or guide this commission through the thinking behind, we believe we're going to have the same revenues, but we are going to increase our expenses by over a million.
Are you talking about staff increases?
No, I'm talking about overall, you're increasing it.
Well, I, I'll just use this as an example. The paper for our brochure is coming in $20,000 more than the same paper for last year. That puts the cost of our season brochure up by almost 45%. And we're anticipating everything else in those areas as going up. And so that is where we're being hit the hardest because of the supply chain. The paper that we're being told is $20,000 more isn't even here yet. It's, it's on its way. And so expenses are much higher in advertising, it's much higher with all of the things that we deal with. The shows are exploding in the fees for the artists, because the artists didn't work for years, and suddenly they're trying to make up for it. And it's, it's a much higher situation than we've had in the past. It's like a perfect storm.
And, I want Commissioner Harkotch to answer.
Yeah, no, I think you addressed a lot of the questions that I had, which were, you know, the ticket surcharge, hall rental, janitorial, stagehands, a lot of that speaks to special services.
We lost 55% of our staff. And 55% of our staff means I almost lost every department head. I think one remained, and I've had to replace them all. We're not paying on the same level as other performing arts halls of our size, and so I've had people, you know, migrating. And then I will tell you, our part-time situation is very difficult. And I'm sure you see this in a restaurant, when you go to a restaurant, there's open tables, but there's nobody to serve you. So cleaning and maintenance is a huge issue. One of the things that we had was, I could tell you, for example, that two of my staff members who had maxed out their comp time, worked 100 free hour, 100 free hours, just to keep the building clean during, during the period of March to June. It's, I have a remarkable staff that has remained and dedicated, because we want you to come and enjoy the theater with all the amenities we have. But right now, we're dealing staffing issues. And I can also point out in ushers, these are the volunteers, Mr. Mayor, we had 500 volunteer ushers. Right now, we have 230 volunteer ushers, because our ushers tend to be a little bit older. And so they're afraid, you know, with COVID, to come back. And so we have a new education director, so he's going to start a student ushering program. I don't know that it will solve all of our problems, but it's one that I think could be a remarkable success. And we're also going to start some education programs where we've hired a new director who is a choreographer, a fight director, and we're going to try to do programming for your grandchildren and your children that will be paid income, which is something that we have never done in the education program. But it is the hardest area the arts has ever faced in my lifetime.
Thank you, those are all my questions, thank you.
Ms. Benzel, the expenditures exceeded the revenue by 1.6 million for '21, '22, and that's, that's the budget, actually, the amended budget had losing by, losing by 1.7 almost million. And then this one, this year, the proposed budget will exceed, expenditures will exceed revenues by through, almost $3 million, which brings our fund balance from what was 11.2 million to 8.2 million.
Mm-hmm.
If this trend continues of us basically maintaining our revenue at that 13 million or maybe slightly more, and this trend continues of dipping into fund balances, we lose all of the fund balance in two years.
Well, keep in mind, A, the reason the fund balance went up is I was able with Mr. Besse's help to secure a SFOG grant, the Save Our Stages grant. So that was $9 million in granting, which was coming in over the last two years. So that made us bring our fund balance way up. Our fund balance wasn't at $11 million, it was something like $6 million. And so the whole reason for that money is to get arts groups through this period when COVID is still raging out there. And I know we all like to forget about it in Florida, but it's high in Sarasota right now, and we're in a venue where people come to gather. Broadway has now released, reversed the mask mandate, but I will tell you this, Mr. Mayor, when I came here, the city was funding the Van Waisel to the point of a million or $2 million every year, which is not uncommon. Most performing arts halls in the state receive at least a million dollars from the city.
The country.
And we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten anything for about 10 years or so.
Yeah, and that's testament. You've done, you've done a good job, and you have a very good contract with the city, which I like, I approve, and you do a great job. So that, those are my questions. Anybody else? None? Thank you, Ms. Benzel.
I'm hoping that COVID, you know, goes away, or we learn to live with it in a way that we can continue to succeed. And, and I'll just add, the next season has some blockbuster shows, so hopefully that won't be an issue.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlin. And I want to thank every one of you on the commission. You come out to the theater, you support us, our education program, and we are very grateful to all of you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Brody, you were fantastic in our vaccination clinic and supporting us, and I want to thank you as well.
You do a great job.
Our next...
Seinfeld sold out already?
It's, it's sold out, we've got some single tickets, but you know the right person if you want a single ticket.
Our next enterprise fund is the solid waste management. It has a beginning fund balance of 2.4 million, anticipated revenues of 13.2 million, and then anticipated expenditures of 14.5, leaving an ending fund balance of 1,107. The percentage of unassigned fund balance to operating expenses in the solid waste is 7.65, or less than one month of operations. This budget proposes converting six part-time positions into four full-time positions. And I'll turn it over to Doug Joffco.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. For the record, Doug Joffco, Public Works Director. Overall, the solid waste budget is up a little about over 3% altogether. Operating side of it is being driven by inflationary cost. One of the biggest costs in this department is fuel. And, you know, that's been, everybody has seen that, and how that impacts them personally, and it impacts us the same way. Luckily, we're starting to see the trend downward. However, it's still much higher than what it was in the past, over a dollar more than what we were looking at last year at about the same time. On the diesel side of it, it's even a little bit higher than that. So, you know, that's what we're kind of faced with, taking a look at that. The other big, large increase in this department is related to Sarasota County. They are looking at about a $2 increase in their rate for the disposal of tonnages at the landfill. And that's going to cost us probably about $340,000 more a year associated to the tonnages. If you want to go on to the next, one of the things that I do want to talk about is, is that this budget does not include a rate increase as we sit here today. But as you can see, the fund balance is continuing to be eaten into as it relates to the solid waste fund. If it weren't for the commission approving $1.6 million in ARPA funding to purchase equipment recently, we would probably have, would have eliminated what we have in the fund balance as it relates to that. At this time, we're not asking you for a rate increase. What we're looking at is coming back to you in the fall, to have a conversation with you as it relates to that. And there's a couple of reasons why that I, we're taking a look at this. You know, in our current economic condition, things are swinging back and forth that are going to have impacts. And just for an FYI, you know, if you take a look back at one of our revenue streams that are coming in recycling, we budgeted $75,000 based on the market value of recyclable materials in this past year. Actually, this year, we've already come in, right now, we're sitting at a year-to-date revenue stream of about $383,000. Again, it's a market-driven issue. You know, it, things could change, just like you heard the Chinese sword aspect of it, where China decided they weren't going to take any recyclables. That took that market completely down, and that's the reason why. We're just coming out of that COVID aspect, and what those markets look like. So, you know, we're not at a point where, like I said, I come back to you in the fall, we'll see where we end up at this year in regards to what our fund balance actually is, what that has to take a look at. But just to kind of give you a forward-looking, what we're looking at is, is that the last time we increased rates in solid waste was over four years ago, it was 2018 that we, we did a rate increase. So we've been using fund balance and driving that and not doing an increase. You know, our current residential rate is 24.55 right now. If I were sitting here today saying something, I'd probably say about $1.89 a month increase in the residential rate, which, you know, is going to take that up to a little over, I think it's $26 and something cents. Now, over annually, that impact on a customer is only $22.68. You know, that's annually, I'm sitting there saying, you know, for you to have the solid waste service that we're providing to you, it's just going to cost you $22.68 more a year as it relates to that. Commercial rates, that's going to swing a little bit more. And the reason why you see on this slide that it goes from 2.50 up to 85.83, it just depends on the level of service that's being provided. As, as we get into commercial, we have service levels that go from one yard up to eight-yard containers and one day to six-day collections. So those types of things, those things happen. And again, as we, we look at what's driving these increases and what we're going to be faced with, you know, like I just told you, the landfill is going from 48.34 to 51. I'm looking at a CPI right now of 8.6% of May. You compare that back to 2018 of 2.2. That has impact on us in regards to the contracts that we have, because many of our contracts have CPI increases in them. When I talk about that, our hauling contracts, you know, our contracts with our disposal facilities for yard waste and things of that nature. So those are a couple of items that we'll come back and sit down and talk to you about. We'll come back with options in regards to the levels of service that we'll provide. But I will tell you, and hopefully you've seen it, your phone isn't ringing off the hook, hopefully, in regards to the service that we're providing. And if you take a look at some of the other communities around us that have contractors and stuff of that nature, they are having issues. We have been significantly able to stay on top of everything that we're responsible for, and we've been picking it up. And I don't have any other thing. I'll answer questions that you may have regarding the budget.
Mr. Jeffcoat, before you take questions from the Commissions, again, again, after this commission and previous commissions for, again, some of the decisions that they have made, to Mr. Jeffcoat's point, you know, we hear all the time about missed pickups in other jurisdictions. I don't think I've heard a missed pickup, you know, from our customers in years. And, you know, that's a testament to the quality of, you know, effort and work that the solid waste department is doing. You know, when we talk about the rate increase, this is an enterprise fund. You know, the, you know, the question is, you know, does the commission, you know, want to ensure that this is an enterprise fund continues to pay for itself, or do you want all taxpayers, because again, they provide service to renters, they provide service to homeowners, they provide service to customer, commercial, commercial establishments. So if not a rate increase, which, you know, we'll come back and talk to you probably later in the fall, if not a rate increase, do you want all taxpayers to subsidize an enterprise fund, which is the solid waste department? We're talking about $1.89 a month, which is about $22 over the course of a year. So again, we'll come back and discuss that.
Commissioner Brody?
Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to comment, I think you do a great job for the city residents. I had the opportunity to come out and tour the facility, maybe six months, a year ago, maybe. And I think it's really enlightening and eye-opening just how resourceful your employees are. I don't think people appreciate how much you do in-house. You know, they are repairing, constantly repairing, the fleet of vehicles at the garage down there. They have master-level mechanics on, on staff. You know, the signs that you see around the city that are posted, make those in-house, the little print shop. And of course, the solid waste department, or the, you know, trash recycling facility, incredibly well-kept, professionally managed, clean. Your employees take great pride in their work. And I think that it's really a testament to your leadership and their desire to, you know, they're public servants. And I think they really embody that and appreciate that. So I just wanted to point out that you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you. And, but as everybody knows, it's them, it's the ones that are out on the street doing it every day that make it what the city is. You know, I, I take pride in the aspect of... You know, I, I take pride in the aspect of, you know, all the stuff that we receive in regards to, you know, a great city that, you know, this is the best city to be at and stuff like that. And it's those individuals, streets and highways, those solid waste individuals, the street sweepers that are out there that are doing it that make it those cities.
They're always, you know, they always have great attitudes. They're always, I see them chatting with residents, and, you know, of, there's probably a handful of departments that really have that direct connection with our community. You're, you're one of them, and I think you and your employees represent the city well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Erkach.
Thank you. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with, you know, the, the level of service that's given by the department and with the employees and their dedication to our city. I too went out and, and did another tour when we were redoing the solid waste facility a couple of years ago. I did a tour, and then I wanted to go back to see the actual finished product, maybe it was six months ago or along those lines. And when I was out there, I noticed that there were, you know, a lot of birds and stuff. And I talked with Mr. Jeffcoat and asked what it was about, and that it was the, the sort of compostable materials. And that led to a conversation because of the exposure that I've had from the Florida League and other organizations about composting and doing a robust composting program. It's sort of a bigger-picture conversation, and I, I don't know really where we are in the state of Florida with these kinds of programs. I have a couple of articles I can share with you all, but this one here talks about how compostable materials, organic waste, is about 27% of the total waste in the landfills in Florida. And so, if we were to just expand the conversation and just think long-term, this isn't anything very quick fixy. We do have a, work with Sunshine Compost, and we have a small program, as you all know, in some of our parks where people, neighbors can go, they have a bucket, and then they can compost. And if we were to expand that and reach in, Mr. Mayor, you always talk about, you know, how do you do this, reconcile this expenses versus revenues? If we were to take some of our expenses down by composting, is this a possible tool for us in the long term? So, if 27% of organic waste goes into a landfill, we, could we potentially reduce our costs by 20%? Because you'd have to, compost would take up some of the other effort. So, we pick up the, the solid waste, we bring it to the city, they put it into those carriers, they go on a truck, gas pollution takes it out to a landfill where they dump it into a landfill, which causes more pollution, it's methane, and that damages our environment. So, we pay to dump it, we pay to transfer it, and then there's the environmental cost. If 27% are in the landfills now in Florida as an average, if we could reduce our contribution of that by 20%, then you could take the costs in here of gas and oil, the transfer, the landfill. And if you do the math, and I know this is not a straight, it's easy calculation, it comes out to about $1 million. I know that's not, it's not, not easy transfer. I was just trying to make a picture for myself of would it be worth our effort? Could it be worth our effort? And I did it based on 20%, not 27%. I don't know if, what the laws are about this, what the rules are about this. I don't know what your, I mean, we've had some conversations about it, we've had some conversations about it. I just want to throw the idea out there to the commission. I don't know what the rules and laws are, but it's just something I was thinking about as a way to lower our cost and do the right thing for the environment if it's possible. So, I just wanted to add my two cents on that.
And, you know, and when we come back to you in the fall to talk about the rate, we definitely can come back and have the conversation as it relates to the composting and things of that nature, because there, there are some definitely laws associated with it and that we'd have to address.
We'll address that when the time comes. Vice Mayor, what do you?
Oh, no, just a comment as well, piggyback off of Commissioner Brody and Commissioner Erkach, the job you all do, you know, you got to give credit what creditors do and acknowledge people for the, for the great work they do. I've had personal situations up in North Sarasota with residents that have come to me with certain problems and/or issues. Me and Deputy City Manager Robinson went up to Janey's Gardens not long ago. They had an issue with solid waste up there and, you know, just overflow. And we, we did, we, we did a walk-around, and that, that was addressed, like literally within the week, you know, and continues to be taken care of. So, and there's a number of other, you know, issues up there that, that arose and, you know, thanks to Deputy, our city manager, you know, Mr. Marlon Brown, you know, and, you know, you and your staff. And just as, you know, Commissioner Brody said, you know, I know a lot of them personally. I see them out there engaging the public. And they're always very respectful, you know, and very cordial. And like I said, that's a testament to your leadership and the, the character of your department. So, I just want to say thank you for the work you all do.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffcoat.
Yes, sir.
It's not in dispute that you do a great job.
Oh, I understand.
You're here from the community, so, so as it relates to this conversation, we're just talking about the budget.
Understood.
The service you provide unparalleled. It's amazing. Now, in 20, at the end of 21, 2021, the projected fund balance was 3.5 million. At the end of 2022, your projected fund balance will be 2.3 million. And at the end of next year, with this proposed budget, your, your, your fund balance will be 1.1 million.
That's correct.
So, we understand, as you have addressed in here, that the, the balance reserve is shrinking. If we're, if, if we're going to have, if we're going to struggle, we know we're going to struggle, and we're going to have to do something about it. You know, how does software GPS cameras, tablets for trucks, and replacement computers help us address any of, any of those shortcomings?
Well, you know, right now, part of the, what we've started to do is, is we, we've started to put chips in all of our garbage cans and things of that nature. So, the software we're starting to develop, putting into our trucks and things of that nature, give us an opportunity when we pass a, a, an address that sits there and says, excuse me, that can was picked up, or that can was not picked up. One of our biggest costs is if we do have a missed pickup, is now turning around and sending somebody back out to do that. Well, what is that missed pickup from? Is that missed pickup from, we did not pick it up, the cart was there? Or was that missed pickup because somebody did not put their cart out, and now they're telling us that we missed it? No, we didn't miss it, you didn't put it out. And those are the things that we start looking at and being able to respond to and sitting there and saying, it was not a missed pickup. You know, we will make arrangements for the next time, but you need to make sure, and it becomes the education process of ensuring that our citizens are putting carts out at the right time, so that they're not getting missed.
I understand the need for, for, you know, technical, technological innovations. However, the revenue, our population, according to the census, has really not changed drastically. The total revenues that I'm looking at, 12.9, you know, last year, we're looking at 13 million, 13.1 million, so, so, you know, almost $300,000 more, that's the only increase we're getting in terms of revenue. So, if our population isn't changing, and our revenue, and our revenues are not changing, you know, how, are we, I mean, and we're doing a great job, as has been established, what, what is the justification for increasing, such a drastic increase in dipping into fund balances every single year?
Well, again, you've got employee cost. Employee costs have been going up every year in regards to that. You know, that's a four-year period of time that we haven't adjusted anything associated to employee cost as it relates to that. Some of the items that we just talked about in regards to what's impacting us today, fuel is a big part of our cost. The cost of the contract with Sarasota County, that's a big cost. Again, now, that, Commissioner Mayor, is driven by tonnages. Even though we may have the same amount of people that are here, it just depends on the tonnages that they're putting into the cart. That's the reason why we, we talk about recycling. Again, the more that we can take out of a $58 a ton cost to a $48 a ton cost type deal is what we try to shoot for. And we, we take a look at that. You know, so there are fixed costs that are contractual and things like that that have gone up a little bit. But, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I understand. Well, employee costs, I mean, you're paying more in salary, you're paying about $250,000 more in salaries. That's, that's the increase, $250,000. In terms of, and you're saving 90 because you're not having any part-time employees. So, really, that 250 in terms of, of salary is, is more like 160 is the increase in employee cost. And I understand that there's some other costs like social security and dental and life insurance, but it's, it's a large increase. It is a, a tremendous increase. I mean, you're looking at containers, carts, landscape enhancements, replacement computers, GPS, and tablets, that alone is almost $900,000. And so, my question is, are there any cost-saving measures that we can implement, or is there, you know, what's our plan? Do we have a plan? What's our plan for the future? That doesn't entail raising rates?
Yeah, on your, on your capital side of it, you know, again, the, those costs are associated to our dumpsters and our containers and stuff like that. You know, we're faced with the same aspect in regards to inflationary costs associated to that and getting them. What we try to do, and we continue to try to do that, is, is we have welders on staff in our solid waste division in regards to trying to maintain and manage those, those containers and things like that and fix them when we can. But, you know, out of that 887,000 capital cost that you're looking at right now, predominantly, that's containers and having to replace containers. And, you know, and that's where we look at, roll-offs. These are big containers, and they're not, you know, when the cost of metal continues to rise, or the supply chain issues that we're faced with the same way, those are what's driving our cost.
How much do they each cost?
It depends on the container. I can get you a listing for that, but...
Because we charge our residents about $200 per, right?
No, it, it's included in the, the cost. Now, a cart itself, again, you know, we...
I was charged, I remember.
Carts are, I'll have to find out what the current, and I'd be happy to send that to you, but that's included in the rate. But our biggest cart cost is not as much there as it is in our dumpsters because of the metal cost.
One second, Mr. Mayor, since you would charge for a cart?
For a, yeah, disposal cart, like a garbage...
We don't charge for carts.
I was going to say, I'm not sure what you would have been charged for.
When, when you, and this is years ago, but when you initially move into a place, yeah, they charge you, there's a charge.
For a cart?
Solid waste disposal?
There's a, there's a deposit, but I'm not sure what they would be charging you for a cart.
Yeah, if you can, do you have that?
Are we talking about the same thing? Are we talking about a garbage dumpster?
A little cart, yeah. I mean, the, the 95-gallon can that you have.
We don't charge for those.
I'll find it for you.
Yeah, please, please do, I'm...
And the recycle ones was a grant.
Recycling was a grant, that's correct.
And those two were no charge.
That's correct.
I mean, if that's our very large expenditure, half a million dollars a year?
So, again, we provide free of charge, so...
That's what I'm saying, so...
If we start, we start charging for the carts, if...
That may be something. That's a replacement cart, right? Or...
And then you're exactly right. We do not charge a fee that I'm aware of for a replacement cart, but we definitely, as an option, as we come back and have that conversation related to the rate, we definitely can talk about that.
Those are my questions. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on. Parking management, tab 39, slide 34. This is the citywide parking fund and has a beginning fund balance of 294,000, projected revenues of 3.2 million, projected expenditures of 3.3, with an ending fund balance of 132,000. The citywide parking fund currently owes the general fund 352,000 for the installation of meters downtown. So, included in this FY23 budget is the repayment of that debt or principal and interest payment on it. Last year, we took it out because of the effects of COVID, and the parking management revenues are sufficient so that we feel that that, we need to put that back in. This budget proposes three new positions. It also converts, of those three, it converts two part-time to one full-time. And I will turn it over to Mr. Cover if he wants to add more to parking.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, Steve Cover, Planning Director. Apologies from Mark Lyons, but he's actually at the International Parking and Mobility Institute Conference, which was scheduled the exact same time. He's on the Board of Directors, kind of has to be there, but also he will be receiving our Innovation in Transportation Parking and Mobility Award there. This year has been an interesting year, to say the least, for the, the parking division. We actually took on two major initiatives and negotiated agreements with both VO and our Bayrunner contractor CPR Transportation. Just to give you a quick update, both of those services have had ridership over 60,000 right now. And the VO ride, they're proposing to increase the fleet to 650 units, which is comparable to the number of units that St. Pete has. And so, we're expecting our ridership not only to be equal to, but exceed that, that's in St. Pete. We also are generating revenues from VO. The initial estimates were 50 to about 75,000. With this increase in fleet and ridership, more than likely, I think, for a complete year, we probably will exceed 100,000 in revenues. This has also been a really good year for parking in general. And as we, as we looked at the revenues over the last couple of years, we've, we've worked through some pretty difficult times with red tide and COVID. This has been our first year where it's been pretty clean throughout the 12 months, and we're proud to say that our revenues have increased by over $500,000. We do have plans, however, to identify new alternatives for revenue sources, and we will be meeting with the city manager later this year to go over those ideas. We're also considering removing our coin payment operation, which we think will build in more efficiency, and I think probably will be more customer-friendly. We're also soliciting for new parking enforcement software and people be, being able to pay for their permits online. We are looking into expanding our mobility services. Obviously, VO is looking to expand their services east, north, and south of the city. And another thing that we, we think we really need to pay attention to is just the growing need for more parking in the Rosemary District area, and so we will be exploring that this upcoming year. As Kelly said, we are requesting two new positions and a combination of two into one, very similar to what we did with the dead and the bid. We just think combining two part-times into a full-time position is more efficient, and actually, there's some, there's some budget savings as well. So, that completes the presentation.
Commissioner Erkach.
On that point there, I saw on page 39.5 for the part-time salaries and then the overtime employees, general employees, both of those numbers increased. And can you just explain to me the shuffle and the combining of the salaries and all that's working, how that's all working there? So, the top line says salary and wages, it goes from 854 to a million, and then the part-time salaries goes from 60,000 to 76, and then overtime general employee goes from 11 to 15.
Right, I, I can let Kelly answer this partially too, but, but keep in mind, we're adding two new positions, and just, there's just some general overall salary increases that are proposed by the city as a whole, so...
And is this room to add more efficiencies as far as combining other part-times? And I'll let you talk, go ahead.
One of the things that Mr. Lyons does is he takes his salaries, his people, and he divides them in percentages between downtown and St. Armans.
Okay.
So, hopefully, when we look at St. Armans, we'll see a decrease there where this one is increased. So, there's moving people around is what he's doing.
The shuffle. The shuffle. Personnel shuffle, okay. And I saw on the CIP, there's a, a mentioning of new EV charging stations. It's a conversation that's being had. charging stations. It's a conversation that's being had, cities, counties, and across the state about having more EV charging stations. But I also saw that there's no funding source and there's no target year. Are there any more robust conversations about that, where they would be, how much that would cost? Is there a plan? Maybe this is a question for Mr. Brown.
Yeah, so, you know, Mr. Brennenberg, who works in the planning department, has been sort of keeping an eye on how we can have more EV stations installed, working with Mr. Lyons as well in terms of locations. As you know, we have several throughout the city, especially in our garages. And so what we look for are commissioner grants, and when those become available, or sometimes FPL may make a proposal to us. And depending on what our share or the match is, we will take advantage of those. So I don't have a target date, but we are constantly looking at the possibility as to where we can put more EV stations, but working more with, you know, vendors or, or individuals who, who have that type of infrastructure to put them in for us. They're very expensive.
Yes, they are.
And so, and, and also too, we are working with the federal government. They have, you know, part of that federal infrastructure grant has EV stations included in that. So we're looking at that as an option as well.
Okay, so we're, we think that there is potential funding out there.
Correct.
I just didn't see anything concrete as part of the plan, and that's something that I think that we should really be focusing on. I've had people ask about it more and more in the community, and the conversation also statewide is increasing. So I just want to make sure that we're on top of that as well. One other tiny question. On page 39.7, I noticed that the fire alarms and sprinkler systems tripled, went from 2,000 to 6,000. I'm just curious.
Which, which one is that again?
39.7. Current year estimate is 2,000, and 23 budget 6,000. And I know that's necessary fire alarms or sprinklers. I'm just curious why. Did we increase the number, the places, the--
We'll have to check on that for you.
Those are my questions.
Mr. Brody.
All right, thank you, and congratulations on successful rollout of the trolley and the VO, the micro-mobility. I think it's, people are really enjoying it using. I see people using the, both of them constantly. But the micro-mobility, I think, has been especially successful. I see people riding those in every corner of our community, and I think people want to have better access to them. One of the conversations I've had with the city manager is about just expanding the number of locations for people to use those and coordinating those with our bus stops. To me, that just makes too much sense not to have a couple of those options for the last mile of a bus route. And particularly, being able to expand it into the rest of the community, into, you know, farther east in our, in the city so that people can use them in their neighborhood, but also use them on the legacy trail and get to and from downtown where they want to go. I think that's really important. So I want to look forward to having some more conversations about that in the future. The employees that you're requesting, you said you're requesting three employees?
Well, two, and then we're combining two part--
What are the two for then? What are they for?
First is for an accountant. We don't currently have an accountant in, in the parking division. This is really a request because we're seeing an increased usage and demand of our system. We're getting more inquiries, more reporting, accounting. We, we really think, we've reached the point now where we're a much bigger operation than we were before, and so it's, it's more complicated. There's more to track. And so we want to make sure we're doing a complete review of our parking revenue deposits, focusing our procedures and transactions to improve those, and also making sure our automated systems are, are operating, recording the information properly. We have had times where our systems have actually shut down for a period of time, and this person will be able to jump on something like that right away and make sure that that's corrected. The second is the garage maintenance technician. Because of the activity has, has increased so much in our parking garages and that we really have scheduling issues in terms of people being able to, to cover certain, certain times and certain hours, particularly when it comes to maintenance. We take great pride in the maintenance of our parking garages. They are really, I think, impeccable. And we, we do get comments on how clean our parking garages are. And we want to make sure that our other parking garage attendants are more customer-focused, dealing with the customers, and making sure that everyone is paying at the exits.
And there's a third one?
Yeah, the third is really just the combining of two part-time parking garage attendants into one full-time. We found that, you know, when you have a full-time employee, there's more reliability, it's easier to recruit, obviously, and it really is easier for us to schedule because then that employee, you know, will, will be there when assigned, and everyone will know when that person is there.
How come, I mean, I go to other cities' parking garages. Why, why can't technology, why can't these garages operate on their own without a person there constantly?
Well, I think, you know, there are always issues that come up. You know, the, potentially the, the mechanisms or mechanical equipment can break down. A lot of times, we have users who have trouble with machines or are new to it, and so they're there to assist.
So this is a projected revenue for next year, right? You're still short of your expenses, though. I mean, this never-ending, like, spend more to recoup more, but it costs more to do it. It just doesn't seem to be--
Just a reminder, this year, we did add back the repayment of the advance from the general fund.
Okay, so you're paying the debts you should pay. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if these two employees are necessary. I mean, and you really can't afford it. We're just going to pretend you can. What, what happened with, where's the line item with the cash? Where, you take cash for special events?
Yeah, that actually is-- That's 344513 hourly payments cash. That's 384,250.
Okay. What are you guys doing with that? I mean--
Oh, it goes into our operations.
So you guys manage $350,000 in cash every year?
They actually manage 3.1 million in revenues.
I know that, but cash, like--
We have cash every day, correct.
Not just, no, no, no. I'm talking specifically about at special events where you literally have a city employee sitting there taking $5 bills from drivers.
You know, our, our special events, that's actually in addition, I believe, so that's, as that is cash.
Why do we do that?
So Commissioner, if you recall, we actually, because of concerns about employees taking that, we actually had an audit done, you know, through the internal audit. So we put some controls in place, you know, to ensure that, you know, there is no issues with the ability to, to collect that cash. If you go to other cities, the same process or same procedure happens. You know, there, when you have special events, if you go to St. Pete, Tampa, they do take cash when there are special events occurring, depending on the location--
Why?
--of those garages.
Why can't we just use the typical schedule and--
Because usually, you know--
I think it's a putting for people.
So you take five, you know, we usually charge $5, you know, it probably costs more for an individual to stay in the garage, depending on how long they remain. For $5, they can stay the entire day. So it's a one, you know, a one-time cost. They can stay as long as they want.
But why can't you just do it electronically? Why do we have to deal with the cash?
I know that is something--
Nobody carries $5 on them, you know, it's--
I hear you. It is probably something we can look at in terms of making, you know, making sure the machines on special event days are able to take that amount. We could take a look at, you know, the, the equipment.
I haven't received the audit yet. I heard there was an internal audit. I heard it wasn't good.
Could, could, could we provide a copy to--
Well, all of you all didn't receive it, but I can send it back out.
Okay.
I remember we--
What's that?
It was in our inbox a while ago. It was like--
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just think that practice needs to end. I think that the, I mean, I haven't seen the audit, but I, I hear it wasn't good, and I don't know why we continue to do that.
Again, it's up to the commission to make a decision if you want to end that.
And I generally just don't think we need the new, more employees. I mean, we're just going to keep employing the cost of this, of this enterprise fund. Doesn't cover, it doesn't, it's not paying for itself, and this is in a good year, quote unquote.
Your turn?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Batee.
I don't know. Well, I myself don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't carry $5 on me, but hey, if I can park for $5 all day, go with it. But I just wanted to say, you know, Commissioner Brody's point, talking about the micro-mobility and the Bayrunner's been great, man. You know, I use it, you know. Me and my girl ride the Bayrunner out to, to St. Armin's or Lido and take the, the scooters back in, you know. So it's been, it's been fun and convenient, you know. Kind of expensive, but convenient, you know. But and I was just talking to Mr. Brown regarding the parklets or what have you, because I know that's a lot of, like, kind of lost revenue as well for parking. I mean, what's the situation with that program? Is it, I mean, is it continuing? Is it necessary now that we're out of COVID? You know, I'm sure a lot of these merchants and, and residents would like to--
And as it stands right now, it is continuing. We're actually doing a transfer from economic development to parking to compensate for the lost revenues of those parking spaces that are being used by restaurants.
And Vice Mayor, to, to that point, I have signed an emergency order that goes to the end of the year, allowing restaurants to continue to use those spaces. But again, we'll be bringing that back. Obviously, there is an issue with the continued use of the public right-of-way outside of an emergency.
Yeah, right.
So at the end of December, that would be going away, and I'm working with the city attorney's office to, to, you know, bring back the reason that we need to, to end it. So a lot of communities that do it is because they have the entire streets closed. But because, you know, the, you know, we have the streets open, it's the public right-of-way, there is a need to really, you know, end the project, end the program, really to get through this last COVID situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Fonny, am I--
No, I don't have anything to add. No.
And, no, I could, I can understand that. And, you know, Sarasota, you know, from my observation and perspective, is experiencing, you know, its first, like, off-season in a couple of years. I'm sure that has like a, a, you know, part, you know, plays part, you know, in revenue as well, because it's not as, I was down, downtown yesterday, and you could park anywhere, you know. So I'm sure that has a lot to do with it as well, you know. We'll see that going into the future, you know, everybody's going back.
Your turn?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Cover.
Yes.
Thank you for being here and for giving your presentation. That transfer from economic development, that's an inter-fund transfer. It's listed as a revenue, but--
Right. It's, it's a transfer from economic development. There's also one in the St. Armin's parking.
But that, I mean, that's from us to us. It really is not a revenue from that department that they're generating. And as it-- Our fund balance continues, well, let's, let's not, let's not forget that we had a meeting about the performance of this department, and we said, give them 18 months.
18, 24 months, yes.
I remember it's, it's 18. But, so that will be coming back to us, but it's, it's something we should definitely be concerned, should be concerning, because if the trend continues, we don't have a fund balance next year. After the next budget, it's, it's gone. And then if any enterprise fund does not have money to sustain itself, where does it come from, Mr. Brown?
The general fund.
Comes from the general fund, which is already squeezed. And I, and this isn't the first time we've said that today. We've said, just two more years and we're dipping into the general fund. All this while we're having this conversation about borrowing, you know, 100, 175 million dollars, which-- I see that many of the revenues are going up. Valet parking permits are going down. Is it possible for this department to use the, somebody in our finance department? Or would they want to have one person managing their finances underneath their department, which is the practice here?
Yeah, I think we really need to have this individual in the parking division. They're going to be out in the field a lot. They're going to be monitoring all the, all the equipment, the revenues, and it's really a very specialized type of accounting that's not typical for the finance department. So that's why we're requesting it.
Because when we see Park Mobile, right, Park Mobile sends you an Excel spreadsheet. They are your accountant. They, they, they show you revenues, expenses. So would that not be the same case when people pay on the, in those meters online? Or doesn't that just generate something for us that shows us how much money's coming in?
It, it is different. You know, once again, you, if you're dealing with cash, you know, that's a whole different system. If the information isn't being registered in the system, and we have had that for a period of like four or five hours, the, the information is not being processed properly. So this individual would be able to stay on top of that and make sure that everything's up to speed.
So, so what is, what is our plan for next year? Do we, do we continue, I mean, we're growing the department, and as we know, with, it's not just an increase in salary, it's an increase in pen, in, in, you know, in retirement benefits and life insur, and health insurance, life insurance, dental, medical. So it, it gets costly. And this, this department has not made money since its inception. Every single year, it costs us more money. A department who's, you know, I, you know, one of, one of its, its core functions is to generate dollars for the city. So--
So Mayor, again, this is the first year, I mean, if you really think back to where we were with parking, that we're actually seeing positive revenues coming into this department. I, I will expect the trend to continue in the following year. I mean, this is, you know, we're expecting the full, full year. When I look at the trends, and I'd be more than happy to show you the trends in parking, both in the, the, the general P parking and St. Armin's, it is--
I'd like to correct you. What's that? They've always had revenues, and the revenues really are not, they're increasing, but if we look at the amended budget, I mean, it's by $200,000. It's--
You always had revenues, but remember, they were up, when you look at the revenues of expenditures in past years, they were operating in a deficit. And that was a transfer from the general fund to support this. This is the first year that we're not seeing any support from the general fund.
We're seeing it from the economic development fund.
Because of the, the parklets. Remember, because this commission made a decision, because of the use of the dining spaces in the streets, there was, there was a need to recomp, to compensate the parking fund. If we didn't have those parklets, those would be parking spots that people would be paying for.
Right.
So that's the only reason you have that transfer from the economic development fund. Other than that, you don't have a transfer coming from any fund into the parking.
What about, what, the individuals wanting to use those parking spaces pay a fine, and that fine is enough to cover the, I remember the conversation we had, is enough to cover the revenues generated from those parking spaces for the year?
Yes, but what I'm seeing is that, that's the only transfer that you have from any fund into the parking, into the parking program. You don't have a transfer coming from any other fund.
No, no, I guess my, my, what I'm saying is, since if somebody, we are, we're allowing parklets, perfect. So we allow someone to use the parklet, parking fund, and we, they pay for what we would have generated. So we're equal. So this, this transfer is sort of extra. I mean, it doesn't offset anything because we're already--
No, it's not. I don't, how could that be extra, Mayor? I don't understand. It's--
If the parking fees--
And we would not have been using--
For the parking--
We would not have been using the economic development fund.
But the parking fees for the parklets are enough to cover the revenues that would have been generated from those parking spots.
Correct.
And so, that's what I'm saying. So we're not using the economic development fund as a means to offset that. This is--
Yes, we are.
Explain that to--
Are the funds from the parklet paid into economic development, and that's why it goes there? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
So because those parking spots are no longer available to the public, we are taking money from the economic development fund to sup, to supplement the parking, the parking, the parking fund.
So where do the funds from the parklet go? That's what I think he's trying to figure out.
There are no funds from the parklet. There's no money--
Permit fees.
Permit.
The permits.
It's free. Remember, you all, this commission-- It's free. Remember, you all, this commission said, give them those spaces free of charge because of the COVID situation.
I thought we, I thought when we adopted the last ordinance, we went to a square footage.
Yeah, we did.
That was sidewalk.
That's a sidewalk cafe.
Outside sidewalk cafe.
Not for the park, not for the parklets. The parklets are free.
Those are free.
That's why I mentioned it about the, the parklets.
Parklets are free. Restaurants are using those parking spaces free of charge. And so we're using the economic development fund to pay for those spaces that would have ordinarily been paid for by people using the park.
And that's why, and that's why I asked that question, because, you know, do we, do we need to continue that or whatever, you know? That's lost revenue.
That is correct.
Correct.
The mayor.
So Mayor, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, no, that makes sense now, but. When would the ordinance take effect for, for the permits? I thought we already passed it and until the emergency order expires? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So when the emergency order expires for the use of the parklets, those spaces will reconvert back to parking spaces. The ordinance on the sidewalk cafes, that's a, that's a different, that's a different discussion. That has nothing to do with parking.
All right. Let's go back around. Commissioner Albert.
You know, all I was going to bring up, and I apologize for interrupting, but I could see that it was like, they weren't understanding. Okay. Anyway, what I was going to say here is we have to remember that we were running at a $600,000 a year deficit when we weren't charging for parking because you still have all of these expenses in the parking department if you're not charging for parking. You still have, you still have the, the meter attendants, you know, to go around and make sure people are staying only two hours. You still have to clean the parking garages. You still have all of these employees and expenses. So this way, at least it's offsetting a lot of that. So that's why it makes sense to me.
I would like to point out too, that we haven't had a subsidy from the general fund in fiscal year 21, in the current year, fiscal year 22, or we are proposing, we're not proposing a subsidy in fiscal year 23. So that's three years without a subsidy from the general fund.
And I'd just like to point out that if the, if there was no transfer from the economic development fund, we would have no fund balance.
Okay, so let me help with that. The transfer from economic development, just you see 153,000 there?
Mm-hmm.
Just pretend like that 153,000 was up there in garage and meter collections. And then the, the transfer was zero. It's the same thing.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. But if that, that wasn't there.
It would be up in the top part.
We, but we would have.
It would be revenues, Mayor.
It would be revenues.
No, yeah, no, it's revenue.
It wouldn't disappear.
What I'm.
Called something different.
If we weren't making this transfer, if we were not making this transfer, we would have no fund balance, is what I'm saying.
No, we would have the revenues.
Revenue would be from parking. Yes.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about if, if we substituted one source of revenue for another. I'm talking about if we're doing exactly what we're doing with the parklets, but decided not to make this transfer from economic development, we would have no fund balance.
No, Mayor. You're incorrect.
How would, how would we make up that?
Because that 153 would have been individuals who were parking in the garages or parking in those parklets.
That's what I'm saying.
So it would be revenue. And so.
I'm not talking about what we would have done otherwise. I'm saying if we're doing what we're doing and offering it for free, and we had not made this transfer from economic development, then it would not have happened. And then it would have been 130, 150,000, you know, it, it, the expenses would have, would have been greater bringing down the fund balance.
You're correct. But then you'd be penalizing the parking fund for the free use of those spaces.
I am, I'm not making, I'm not talking about the policy of it or the, the mechanics of it. I'm saying that if it weren't for this payment, we wouldn't have a fund balance. That's the only observation I'm making.
And with your respect, if we didn't have the parklets, we wouldn't be having this conversation either. If we didn't have dining in the.
No, I, I agree. I agree. I'm just making you aware that, that is the only thing keeping this fund balance on the positive right now. So I'm in favor of the parklets. We needed them. They were, they were necessary, but. Let's go, let's go around one more time.
Would you have voted for them if you thought it would penalize the parking fund?
In the middle of COVID, it was an emergency, yes. They were necessary, yeah. Commissioner Brody. But I thought everybody was paying now. That's what I keep, so.
So let me just comment. I agree with Commissioner Aaron Koch on the EV stations. I think we can do a better job. You know, the county is doing, has some robust plans for expanding EVs. I'd like to see more in our public parks and garage facilities. I think that we, we, I know that there's money at the federal level for those investments as well. I guess my comment is just for, just kind of in general. I think sometimes we get too wrapped up in making this budget work and, and you know, parking management is complicated. There's different arguments for expanding or reducing it. But, you know, you have to think about it in the real world too, and you also have to think about the overall goal or progress of our community and not so much trying to make this budget, you know. I guess it's not just not making this budget work, but it's just, it can be counterproductive to trying to make it work, to improving the quality of life in our community. Give you an example, everybody, I think, understands the need for a new streetscape on Main Street that will reduce spaces far beyond what our parklet program or whatever is. You know, those decisions shouldn't be based on trying to make this budget work. And also, those conversations are different in the real world than they are in here. I mean, because in the real world, you take three spots from, you know, in front of Duval's or something. You know that those people aren't turning around and going home. They're, they're parking in another space. So I don't really think of it as lost revenue. I know that those people are paying in another spot at that time. So, I mean, you know, the whole, all of these little like, I think we're, reasonings and rationales are a little weak logic and I think kind of productive to the overall trying to improve the quality of life here and improve the experience of coming to these areas. And my fear is that these little shortfalls just lead to more conversations about either expanding paid parking or reducing, you know, services like the parklets. And I just want to keep the overall picture in mind that, you know, making this work, I think, is extremely challenging no matter what. And, you know, I just have issues with the, with the program overall, but that it can affect the overall goal of us trying to improve the experience of coming to these areas. Final question is, this encompasses both St. Armin's and downtown, correct?
No, it doesn't.
This is, what is this for?
St. Armin's is next.
Next one is St. Armin's.
This is just downtown.
This is, this, everything except St. Armin's.
This is citywide except St. Armin's.
Okay, could have mentioned that. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Albert.
Just a couple of points. The reason to transfer from economic development is this is our, our way to encourage economic development in the downtown. That's why we wanted to keep them parking there. So I do think that it makes sense that there should be something from economic development to substitute for that. And, and I don't think that if they park somewhere else, they're necessarily going to be paying. We don't have that many paid parking spots. There's an awful lot of free spots. So if they're not parking there, they may not be paying somewhere else. So we're losing that revenue. And we're, we've chosen that we want to encourage economic development so that the restaurants downtown can recover from COVID. So that makes sense to have that, that fund in there. And I, I don't think it takes away from people's experience. I mean, I've gotten very, very little pushback or complaint about, I mean, we still have lots of free parking downtown. We have free parking on the beaches and you go to, you know, most of the communities around here and there's parking, you don't park anywhere without paying and you don't park on the beaches without paying. So I think our very modest program of being on State Street and, I mean, Main Street and Palm really is just very, very minimal compared to what would happen visiting in other communities. So, and I think it's been well run and, you know, with people being able to use the Park Mobile, they can use credit cards, they can use cash. I think it's been a really successful program and it's, and it's helped, it's helping go towards all these costs of parking is not free. And this is a user fee rather than, you know, pay, having our entire city populace who may or may not be using the parking pay for this.
Vice Mayor Battey.
Oh, no, you know, piggyback off of what Commissioner Albert just said, you know, you compare, you know, Sarasota to, to most cities. I mean, you go to St. Pete, listen, you're going to pay for everything. You know, you, there's paid parking everywhere. I mean, how much free parking do we have out here in Sarasota? You know, and if you put in meters or whatever, you know how much revenue that would be, you know, for this city? And I don't know how many, you know, like spaces, you know, in total, like for the parklets and what, and so on. Do you know how many?
I think it's forty-something spaces.
Forty-something spaces. Whatever. I mean, and there's a, there's a lot of free parking in Sarasota, particularly like downtown, you know. So like I said, you compare that, you know, if you're on the beach in St. Pete, or you're downtown St. Pete, in Tampa, what, you're going, you're going to pay, you know what I mean, to park there. And I think, you know, what's getting kind of, you know, confusing with a lot of people is the fact that Sarasota has gone from total and complete like free parking to now they have to pay, you know, and this is, this is the, the pains of a, of a growing city, you know. I mean, we're dealing with this, you know, all the time, you know, in terms of what it is we're going to do to accommodate all of these people. And everybody, you know, wants, you know, all of these anomalies and, and, and they, they want this and they want that for the city and why aren't we doing this and why aren't we doing that? But yet, you know, we don't have things like parking to sort of create revenue, you know, to, to accommodate like that, that growth, you know, and the things that, that people want to see in the city. I don't think that it, that it, that it, um, it does anything in a negative aspect to the, the quality of life here in the city and the experience of people that have come here. Like I said, we have free, we have our own parking spaces downtown and when that, trust me, I'm going to make use of mine and whatnot, you know. So, and, and my girl, hey, I tell her all the time, hey, come, go park at City Hall. She goes and parks right downtown and she has no problem paying, you know. So I think there's people just used to it and they'll continue to get used to it. And, you know, it's, it's, you got to pay to play. And that's kind of, you know, how I look at it. So I don't have a problem, you know, with the, whatever. I have a problem when they give me tickets, but, you know, you know, whatever.
Excellent. All right. Moving on.
This is the last enterprise fund and it is St. Armin's paid parking area. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Brody, this is a separate fund and the reason is because bond covenants require that we keep all of the revenues and expenditures separate until debt is paid off. So this services the St. Armin's area. It includes the garage and the meters in St. Armin's. Again, we have a debt service payment from the general fund that's been deferred. We are going to continue to defer it because we don't have enough, we don't feel that there's a comfortable amount of fund balance in there to start paying it back. The debt service on the bonds, you see a transfer of 890,000 that goes to the debt, the St. Armin's paid parking debt service. And the remaining debt service I'll talk about later comes from special assessments that is collected in the debt service fund. The beginning fund balance, 232,000, anticipated revenues of 1.4 million, anticipated expenditures of 1.6 million for an ending fund balance of 65,000. Are there any questions?
Questions.
Okay. That completes the enterprise funds. I would like to see if you're interested in taking a break right now. Five minutes?
Break. Take a quick five minute break. I'll see everyone back here.
Medical and Dental and our law enforcement liability. This slide shows the workers' comp and it's on page, it's forty-five dash two. So our workers' comp has a beginning fund balance of one point one million, projected revenues of one point six, total expenditures of one point six, leaving and remaining ending fund balance of one point two. The general and fleet liability has a beginning fund balance of five hundred and two thousand, revenues expected of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, expenditures of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand with an ending fund balance of one hundred and fifty-five thousand. The law enforcement death benefit has a beginning fund balance of five hundred and forty-one thousand, revenues of nine, ninety-five hundred, no expenditures because we don't want any, and an ending fund balance of five hundred and fifty thousand. Our group medical and dental has a beginning fund balance of seven point five million, revenues expected of eleven million, expenditures of eleven point two million, and an ending fund balance of seven point four million. The law enforcement liability fund has a beginning fund balance of ninety thousand, revenues of a hundred and fifty thousand, total expenditures of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand with an ending fund balance of forty-two thousand. Are there any questions on the self-insurance fund?
What is, what is our plan to deal with the rising costs of health insurance? Have we done one, have, in the past, we've, oh, yeah, just, overall, it's not, it's not bad, overall, but just looking at some of those individual. You know, overall, it's just in a difference of, you know, in excess of five hundred thousand dollars in terms of expenses to revenues, but when we look at some of those specific ones like. I mean, group medical is one of them, but they, do we have a, as it's going to continue to increase in price, and it's actually not bad this year, as it's going to continue to increase in price, have we, do we have a contingency plan, like if a catastrophe hits or we need to do something in terms of, do we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the record, Stacy Mason, HR Director, but thank you, Mayor, for the question. There is a philosophy that we've actually put in place time and again, and we will talk about that probably a little bit more in OPEB trust fund that comes next. But what you do, and the philosophy is, you look at vendor contracts and the cost of the network for claims under medical. You want to make sure the usage and the cost is decreased the best you can do. In most recent history, we have changed from Cigna to Blue Cross. One of the uniquenesses about our plan is we have both employees and retirees on our group self-insurance plans, so we need a national coverage, we need a partner that's national. Cigna was that, we went to Cigna in two thousand and ten, we did decrease our costs at that time, they started rising again, we knew we had to go out and look at our network costs, so we went out to market and Blue Cross brought back the best cost containment we could do. So that's one of the prongs we always have to look at, is those vendor contracts to keep costs in place. The second is the number of members we have on the plan and the health benefits that we can provide, which is, you hear us talk about a lot, preventative wellness, part of our structure or our plan, our clinic is a huge piece of that puzzle. We want to do preventative wellness, we keep our members healthy and contained and at a good maintenance spot, we don't have those catastrophic claims, as they're called. So we can control those a little bit by providing some of those things and incentivizing those. So we have a whole structure for wellness incentive, too. We strive to push our members, get your biometrics done, do your preventative wellness, we will lower your rates, we'll give you some incentives to do that. So it's member wellness, good vendor contracts, and then auditing claims. We don't pay for things that aren't covered by our contracts, so we work with providers through Blue Cross at this time as our vendor to keep those low. We do quarterly reviews of our claims, both our active retiree, dental, pharmacy, and medical, that's a big piece of what comes out of this, it's not just medical. Pharmacy is a huge cost, too. We've been able to contain that by taking the PBM, it's called Pharmacy Benefit Manager, away from the medical portion. So we did that again in twenty-twenty, we converted in twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty. Just to kind of give you a bigger picture, and I thank you for noticing that our claims are in a good place, but we do have those plans in place. We went from having claims over seventeen, eighteen, nineteen time period of thirteen and a half million. We are now pulling that down, and at one point, we're at about nine million. So we're watching all that, so we've put these things into place every time we see kind of an elevation, we know we go from green, yellow, red, and we got to hit it before it gets too high. So those are the things we always are looking kind of at a bellwether to make sure our claims do not get to a point that we're, have to make a quick pivot. We should know at least a year or two ahead of time if we need to make changes. Now, another prong is changing your plan design and what you do a cost split with your members on. So that's also another element we look at, we change our plan design to spread the cost element out. So those are all the, the four big ones that we can do to keep costs down. So we did that, it has, it has shown that that was the right approach to take, but we continue to monitor that, we monitor our clinic, both our utilization and our costs, our diagnosis, our prognosis of those diagnosis on a monthly basis, so we can kind of flag, too, if things are happening in our clinic with our membership and utilization and cost there. So those are some of our strategies.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's the end of our internal service funds. We're going to move into our trust funds. And Stacy, I guess you should just say. So on this slide, we can look at our trust funds, they're on the bottom, and we can see that they have increased one million dollars, or fifteen point fifty-one percent. We have two trust funds, we have our OPEB and our 401 Defined Contribution Plan. The first one that we're going to look at is on tab forty-six, and OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, that's slide fifty-three if you need that information. This fund was established with the city ordinance oh-six-oh-four-six-ninety-nine, the OPEB investments are invested per the OPEB investment policy, the fund has an oversight committee that's made up of the city manager, the city auditor and clerk, and the director of human services. We have a beginning fund balance of fifty-nine million, we have projected revenues of three million, which this is highly subject to the market rate and our interest income that we receive from our portfolio, and then total expenditures of seven point seven million with an ending fund balance of fifty-four million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-seven dollars.
No questions on our end.
Any questions? Okay. The next trust fund that we have is the 401A Defined Contribution Plan. This, this trust fund was established in two thousand and eleven, a committee was established to oversee the investments of this plan, we call it the ERAC Committee, which means Employee Retirement Account Committee. The beginning fund balance is sixty-one thousand, revenues are projected at twenty-five thousand, expenditures are projected at sixty-five thousand with an ending fund balance of twenty-thousand. Any questions?
No questions.
So this completes the trust fund budget presentation. Now we're going to move into our debt service funds, and these are funds that are used strictly to account for our principal and interest payments. Taking a look at our overall slide, you can see that there's very little change, there's an increase of twenty-four thousand or point five-three percent, and that just indicates that our debt service payments have remained steady, and we don't have any new debt that we're having to add to this group. Our bond ratings, as I mentioned earlier, are, are very good, we are like.
Ms. Tripple, could you just go over the Bobby Jones debt service, I mean, that's one that we skipped, and I know.
I'm going to get to it.
I thought that was part of your.
It, it is, yes. So, and when I talk about bond ratings, that includes Bobby Jones, or, that's a loan, so it doesn't include, excuse me, but our bond ratings are very good, we're at the next to highest level of Big A, Little A one, and Fitch ratings of AA plus. Our special obligation bonds are one below that, and our revenue bonds are also one below that. These are our governmental debt service funds, and that's everything that we talked about yesterday, related to yesterday, today, when we started on our enterprise and internal service funds, those are called proprietary funds. So for our governmental debt service funds, we have a two thousand and fifteen GEO bond that is for the police building, two thousand and sixteen GEO bonds for the Golden Gate Streetscape improvements, two thousand and nine Build America bond, that is for the Payne Park land and the R.L. Taylor Center. We have a two thousand and twenty refunding bond that, this happened this year, it was two thousand and ten, for the stadium, and then the Glen Oaks, which is an internal debt, it's a special assessment for the Glen Oaks wall. Our Advalorm debt, as I mentioned, for the police station and for the Golden Gate Streetscape, is based on the taxable value of our, our land in the city, and you can see that both the two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen millages are, are decreased, and that's because we're paying down the debt. The millage for the two thousand and fifteen GEO bond is point one seven eight-two compared to point two one zero zero last year, and for the two thousand and sixteen general obligation bond, the millage is point eight four one nine compared to last year's point nine seven seven five. This slide just gives you how much of debt is outstanding, both for the year we're in and for the proposed year, and it also tells what the principal and the interest payments are for each of those funds. Now we're moving into the proprietary fund debt, and in the proprietary funds, we have the water and sewer revenue bonds, two thousand and fifteen, nineteen, and twenty-one. We also have the state revolving fund loan for wastewater and drinking water, and that also pertains to the water and sewer. We have the St. Armin's parking area that was mentioned earlier today, two thousand and seventeen, and A and B, and this is paid with special assessments and also the parking fees from the St. Armin's Parking Fund. In addition, we have a new debt, the Bobby Jones Golf Complex, and that was in January when we issued this debt. We have the first payment budgeted in the general fund this year, and when the golf course is up and running, the fees from the golf course will pay that debt. And then we have a solid waste capital lease, we're in the last year of a lease payment for some equipment that Solid Waste purchased five years ago. This slide, again, just separates out the proprietary funds, and it lists the debt outstanding of what we have in the current year versus what we will have in the proposed year, fiscal year twenty-three, and it also gives the budgeted principal and interest for each of the debts. Are there any questions on the debt service of the city? I went through that rather fast.
No, no question.
I did have a question, I cannot find it.
I just didn't see your name on the.
No, I was looking for my question, and I cannot find it, but I know when I read through this, I had a question about something, it's okay, we'll move on.
Go back to it later, okay.
I would like to explain about Bobby Jones, so when we did the general fund presentation, you saw a transfer for Bobby Jones debt service payment. That transfer went into a debt service fund, which is an enterprise fund for Bobby Jones, and here you can see on this slide, the, the budget for that is a principal of one million one hundred and seventy and interest of four hundred and fifty-three thousand for a total of one million six hundred and twenty-three thousand. Does that make sense about the inter-fund transfer portion? Okay. All right, if there are no more questions, this concludes our debt service funds, and we can move into the five-year capital improvement program. Ask Mr. Doug Jeffcoat to come down, and also on each, I've, give you each a big packet with the loan paper, do you have that in front of you? If not, I have extra copies. Yeah. Can you give her? Yeah. Give Jen another one because she's got the old one.
I've got the new one.
Okay.
I think that this was from a couple days ago, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put it in here. So these next five funds that I'm going to go through are special revenue funds, and we, we, if you recall, we skipped them yesterday because they are part of the CIP presentation. So we're going to go through five funds that primarily fund the city CIP, and we talk about the city, the capital improvement program now, we're talking about the portion that is not water and sewer. So if you're following through with your, with your book, it's a tab twenty-four, and the first fund that we're going to talk about is the penny sales tax, and as you know, there's a refer, or we're working on a referendum for penny four, we're not going to talk about that today, we're talking about penny one, two, and three, which are existing penny funds. There's a beginning fund balance of three point nine million dollars, there are revenues projected of eleven million, we have eleven point six million in projects, and a transfer to debt service of one point three for total expenditures of thirteen million. That leaves us with an ending fund balance of two million. And I think that we, we've discussed this before, when we set a project up for a CIP project, it stays in that project until the commission either decides the project's complete or the project is no longer needed, or the project come in under budget, and then any funds from that project will be moved either to fund balance or to another project. Any questions about the penny sales tax?
Ms. Turner-Cott.
I just had a question about the projects on twenty-four-two, maybe that's a question for Mr. Brown.
Are, are we going to be getting to the project?
We will get to the.
Want me to wait till the CIP?
Yeah.
Okay.
These are just the funding. Okay, the next fund that the CIP is primarily CIP projects is the multimodal transportation impact fee, it's on tab twenty-five. The beginning fund balance is one point four million dollars, the revenues are projected at seven hundred and fifty thousand, the projects are nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand with administration cost of twenty-three thousand, total expenditures of nine hundred and ninety thousand with an ending fund balance of one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Questions? This slide is two, two funds, the gas tax, which is tab twenty-six, and the local option fuel tax, which is tab twenty-seven. The gas tax, we're able to include operating costs in that, but the primary restriction is that it has to be for transportation, so the gas tax fund includes, or seven cent gas tax includes both CIP items and operating items, and you'll notice that there's a transfer in to the general fund, and that's for street lighting and for those type costs. The five cent gas tax is restricted to specifically CIP projects, capital projects. For the seven cent gas tax, we have revenues of one point five million, expenditures of one point four, and then an ending projected fund balance of two hundred and eighty-six thousand. And for the five cent local option fuel tax, you can see revenues projected at nine hundred and fifteen thousand, expenditures of one hun, one million one hundred thousand, and a projected ending fund balance of thirty-one thousand. What you can tell from these ending fund balance that we're projecting is that gas tax revenues are not as prevalent as sales tax or other type gases, and as we move to electric cars and different modes of transportation, our gas tax revenues are, are not there. Any questions? Tourist development tax, we have a beginning fund balance of seven hundred and seven thousand, we have revenues of one million, our expenditures is restoration of Lido Beach of a million, and an ending fund balance of seven hundred and five thousand. This is tab twenty-eight, just to let you know, the county reimburses the city upon request of expenditures that are made, and I think on tab twenty-eight dash two, you will see a schedule of how much money the county holds for the city, and at the close of fiscal year twenty-one, the county held two million seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand of our funds. And I'll turn it over to Doug, and he will be using the hard copy that you've been giving.
Again, for the record, Doug Jeffcoat, Public Works Director. This is our five-year capital improvement program that was provided to you in your books. I, I think the thing here, I just want to start off with, there were two changes from the original that was provided the first time, but had been updated in the, the last set that the finance department has given to you, and they're minor changes. Project number forty, St. Armin's Streetscape, we've added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the twenty-two, twenty-three, that's included in their budget, and then in number, project eighty-three, which is our parks and recreation, the commission approved doing, appropriating dollars for the sales shade structures for the bayfront, so that has been reflected in the reappropriation column on there for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, not really much changes to the actual capital improvement program from the past. We will be asking you at the budget hearings to really only approve the one column, the twenty-two, twenty-three funding, you will not be asked to approve any funding past that. As in the past, we've included changes in red for items that have, in my cover memo, unless you'd like me to go over it, I've included in there what was in, added and what was removed and, and changes, I'll be happy to do that, but they were in the cover memo and, and it relates to that. One thing that is a little different from what's being presented to you than in the past is you have two appendices, appendix A and appendix B, and really, reason for that is when we look at a, you know, your appendix A, we've got infrastructure grants that are coming down, that we will be going after to try to help offset some of our own funding to move these projects along, however, they are not dollars that we actually have received, and as you all are aware, you know, sometimes we get to the last minute where we've been approved and we get a veto or something like that, so we're not going to, we, we've shown what we're looking at, and as these grants get approved and move forward, they will come to you as a commission anyway for approval of the grant process, and then we will move those into the capital program at that time, but as of right now, that's not where they are. Appendix B is the conversation regarding the surtax for extension. As you know, that, that extension is going to be in front of the voters in November, with the hopes that they will pass the extension for the fourth term, and upon that, what we've done is we've identified those projects that are included in the surtax that would be impacted in this five-year capital program, however, we are not including them in the capital improvement program until such time as the voters do approve the surtax for. Commissioners, that's my presentation, I will be happy to answer questions, I think I do have members of staff in the audience that are, can answer specifics related to projects, but also remember, we could, we'll be back in front of you as part of the boat, you know, the, the budget hearings, and if you have questions from here to then regarding projects, we'll be happy to answer those, just send them to, get with the city manager or myself, and let me know, and we can definitely get you the information ahead of that time.
Ms. Turner-Cott, so do you, were you just still on here from last time?
Yeah, but I still, I have questions.
Okay. What was yours?
So this is the time for me to ask specific questions about specific projects? Okay. So number one, the seawall replacement projects, how does that fit in with our softening shoreline efforts? How do those two?
What we do is, you know, what we take a look at, and we, we talked about, we, we've got a, about two hundred and something linear feet of hardened shorelines, and as we look at replacing those, as, as those things are starting to age and they're, we, we take a look at what are the efforts that we can do to make those either soft, or are we going to be required to make them hard again? So each one of those circumstances, we take a look at what are the possibilities of changing those structures? You know, the perfect example would be what we did down off of Boulevard of the Arts, going from a hard seawall to a, a soft seawall and stuff like that, so we'll take a look at those one by one, and there's definitely certain, you know, it's not as simple as, you know, of sitting there and saying, we're going to convert all of our, our seawalls to, you know, soft, it's just because of tides, things of that nature, what will make sense and, and what will have to happen.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we're still being very active about softening our shorelines and not just hardening them.
That's, that's the efforts that we're taking a look at, like I said, in each individual situation has to be looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
May I continue? On the number two, just a small question, what's a B O D R?
That's, that's the basis of design review, and that's related to the engineering cost of putting this project in place.
I didn't know what that was, what that referred to, all right. So the next page on the Lido light improvements, number six, is that in addition to the solar lights that we just did out there?
No, that's, that project is currently still underway, that's the reason why it is here, I will let you know, if you're interested, they have started to light up the lights on Ben Franklin, so if you get a chance, go and, and take a look, they have started moving that forward.
And the old poles will be removed?
The old poles will be removed once, now, we have to make sure that we get approval through Fish and Wildlife, just because of the turtle aspects and the, and all the other things that are related to the environment out there, and as soon as we get all that, then everything, we'll close this project out.
Great. On the next page, the sidewalk construction, I noticed that Arlington Park was not part of this, and we have been having some input from neighbors there that there are some major gaps connecting the neighborhood to the school, and parents are having to walk with their kids in the streets, I didn't know if that was, had been forwarded, Mr. Brown, or?
I haven't, I haven't seen a request.
We had, yeah, we had a meeting about that a while ago with Nancy Kelly, and I went out there and I toured the neighborhood, and there are, you know, there are parts of blocks of Arlington Park where they, they do want a sidewalk, so sometimes people don't want them, but they do want them, especially in, with the idea of connectivity to the school, and so there are definitely gaps where that's missing, and I was, wanted to bring that to your attention, that that should be part of.
Could you forward that to me, please?
All right, yeah, well, yeah, I can. Yeah, we had a conversation about, eight months ago about this? Yeah, we had a conversation about eight months ago about this?
Are you talking about the Murr Trail and Shade?
Nope. No, 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 no.
Okay, I don't recall that.
I, I, I'll definitely, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see in regards to that, because, you know, part of our program is to take a look at gaps, where it makes sense to, to be able to do that and to be able to address those issues.
Yeah.
As you know, the side, you know, we get to where neighborhoods want them and some neighborhoods don't, and we get into issues there.
Sure. And this is like on East Avenue and in that sort of area south of Bay of Vista and throughout the neighborhood.
If you could send me, if you would be happy to send me something, we'd definitely take a look at it.
Yeah, we can have a conversation about that, Mr. Brown, right?
Just send it, yeah, just send it to us.
And then on page 14, number 15, citywide traffic calming infrastructure. I saw later on that there was the addressing in front on Central Avenue that is finally being addressed, but on Arlington as well, they also have concerns there.
And again, Commissioners, the traffic calming process works, there's a process, so it's not just the city going in and putting in traffic calming.
I know, I know. And so that's sort of what's happening on, on number 20, which is the Mary Dean and Coconut Avenue. I'm really glad to see that that's finally happening, you know, at 15th Street.
Yes, we, we are moving forward with that as quickly as we can. I will tell you that we put that out to bid, and we had one contractor that did it, and it was triple the price.
Oh.
So we're looking at alternatives and trying to reconfigure and also find out, you know, what the, why not, we had multiple people came in and got the plans, but we only had one that bid on it.
So we're not going to do the?
As of right now, we're not. I mean, we're, we're looking at putting it back out. We're trying to figure out why the others did not bid on it. You know, was it something in our specs that they didn't like, you know, in, in regards to that? Now, part of this is, as you can see, is CDBG dollars that are being used to fund that. With that comes some other regulations in, in regards to procurement. So I don't know if those were the issues for the other vendors in, in regards to that, because, you know, Davis Bacon becomes one of those things that comes into play, and not all vendors want to expend those additional dollars. Or, as we see, you're going to expend, they're gonna, they're gonna charge you for it.
Hmm.
So, but we are, we are actively looking at that and trying to move that project forward.
Okay. It's just a heavily pedestrian area there. There's the park, there's the kids crossing the street, it's, people are speeding down Central Avenue, trucks, as you know, that's a, that's a big one. And I'm very happy to still see the Newtown sidewalk and lighting and landscape project in there as well. Mr. Brown and I already had a conversation about the affordable housing trust fund. And then? Those are all the questions I have for the moment.
Commissioner Brody.
Ask somebody else and come back around.
Where do we, and this might be a message for, or a question for Mr. Covert, too. Some of these little areas that we have easements to use to connect neighborhoods to our legacy trail or to the parks, where do we have funding? Do we have a funding source for small projects like that?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner Brody. So one, one of the things that we're doing, and we're looking at the possibility of using grants, is how do we connect the legacy trail to other areas, so like to Bobby Jones and to your point, some of those areas. I know Doug, with Mr. Patel and their staff are looking at those things, so I'll get your status report as to where we are with those.
Yeah, some, some of the infrastructure dollars that are, are coming down are definitely qualifying those types of things to be able to, to move those types of projects forward, and we're looking at those connectivities in, in doing so.
Would it be prudent for us to create a fund or create some kind of identified source, or at least a, a kind of pot of money that we can try to, you know, dedicate to those? They seem like small additions and small changes that can make a big difference to a neighborhood.
I mean, good point, you know, Commissioner Brody. Again, you know, my philosophy is to try to tap into dollars that are available, you know, the federal government has, you know, billions of dollars available, and to tap into those first before we start, you know, using our own funds. But it is something that is a priority of ours, especially in, you know, for neighborhoods and low-income neighborhoods, to try to get that connectivity.
Seems like something we could maybe, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like there's not, I think it's important, and I want to make sure we have plans, you know, because one of the requirements of these funding sources is to have plans ready to go, not just keep it kind of a nebulous idea up into funding. So, I don't know, maybe that's just something to keep in mind for, for the future.
We call it shovel-ready.
Yeah.
And that has been sort of a priority of, you know, all departments, is to have projects shovel-ready. So again, Mr. Patel and his staff are working on identifying those areas and, you know, what we can do to provide that connectivity. So when those dollars become available, and a lot of it is coming through, you know, the state and their departments, that we are ready to tap into those dollars.
Right. And just, you know, basically in the past, we've used the General Mert as the dollar funding or a project for those types of things. And Penny III is the dollar that was really set aside, and I'll have to go back and confirm, but I'm sure we put some dollars in Penny IV for it also. But the mindset here is, is that, you know, Penny III is going away. However, with what's coming down through the grants is being able to use what we have in Penny III to match dollars to be able to expand the program.
Okay. Draw your attention to one of the projects, 10th Street Boulevard of the Arts. The Bay project obviously is coming along nicely over there. If you haven't been over there to see it, you should. It's, I think, really gonna be a nice kind of fight, terminating point for Boulevard of the Arts. I mean, I see the funding in 2223. Is that fully funded, that project fully funded?
As of right now, yes, we are, we are fully funded for the Boulevard of the Arts and 10th Street. I'm gonna ask Mr. Patel to come down and confirm that for me, but I, I'm pretty sure that we are, I think we've got some grant dollars.
Yeah, grant that we are pursuing for that, but Ms. Patel can probably address that.
Yeah, so Nick Patel, City Engineer, for the record. So we're waiting to hear back on the raised grant for the remaining dollar amount, but as far as the city match and the 30% set of plans, that is all ready. So we're waiting to just hear back on the grant.
Okay, if we don't get it, what's the alternative?
Well, there's other grant opportunities, or the other thing we could always look at is modifying the scope or reducing scope, but I, I think the plan would be to continue to pursue other grant opportunities.
When will we know whether we got it or not?
We should know hopefully by August this year.
Okay. Okay, and then North Legacy Trail Extension, where are we on that?
So right now, we've, we're having a meeting on August 9th with Public Lands of Trust, and we're talking about all municipalities, including Sarasota County, and Public Lands of Trust is NDOT. We're meeting to discuss routes and specific area will be discussed, will be the North Legacy Trail portion.
Okay. So we, do we have any funding? Where are we at with funding for it?
The, the funding side of it is, it's, there's not enough funding there to do the North Legacy Trail. I mean, we talked about it.
What about design?
Well, we've got it, we probably have enough in there to do preliminary design work, but there's definitely not to go to probably construction design, but.
We haven't finished negotiating with the railroad, so.
That doesn't seem to be going in any good direction, I would say.
Okay. I think we should do design, though, just to at least have something to show for, to have something to, you know, propose, to advocate for when we do talk to the railroad, when we do talk to the public lands, when we do talk to state and federal reps.
Well, I, you know, in, in regards to that, I know staff, Nick and his group are, are looking at alternatives. If some reason the railroad does not, what's the alternatives to be able to get to north? What we would call them is, is probably urban trails, to be able to make those connections. And, and that, I think that's part of the conversation that you're having.
That's correct. So we're, we're talking about all the alternatives other than the rail line corridor with Public Lands of Trust and Gulf Coast. So hopefully after August, we should have some consensus as to which direction we're moving forward with.
Hmm. Okay. Okay, I mean, I think we should, I mean, that's interesting, so not using the railroad at all?
Commissioner, the railroad has been really difficult. I mean, we've even engaged the city attorney's office and even trust for public land to, you know, assist us with the conversations. We will have to, it's kind of like giving up your firstborn, dealing with the railroad, and they just, they're, they're just, they're just not bending.
I, I think one of the, the things that you have to understand in regards to what's the difference between what the county has been able to do and what we have to do for this north section is, is the outright purchase of the property from the railroad. They're not willing to sell the property to the north. So we'd have to get into a lease agreement type thing, and that gets us into some other issues that become legal issues.
More eminent domain?
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that from the federal standpoint, not, I think they have all the power. The, and, and that's really become the issue, is, is that, you know, one of the things there is, is that they are refusing to enter into certain agreements that we would need related to environmental and things of that nature. So that's really kind of where we're standing.
I mean, when, when, when the railroad is, you know, requesting that a city maintain crossings and their tracks and their drainage, the cost to the city will be, I will tell you, will be unbearable. We'll be paying the railroad for everything and anything that they need, just using or leasing their property.
Right. And the latest conversation was they want us to pay for replacing their rails.
Who's the entity that owns that?
Seminole Gulf.
Seminole Gulf is the entity.
Federal entity, is that what I was hearing?
Private.
Private.
They're private, but they, but they, you know, again, the history of the railroad is that they have sort of like sovereign powers and sovereign immunity. It's like, it's, it's really difficult. It's really difficult.
Okay. So, well, I'd like to know what results from the August meeting, what our path forward is, if there is one.
Yep.
I think that's really important, you know?
And Commissioner Brody, to your point, again, I think it's really important to connect, you know, North Sarasota, you know, our low-income area with the rest of Legacy Trail, and that's why Mr. Patel, Mr. Jeff Gordon and his staff are looking at alternatives. We have to make that happen.
Yeah, I agree.
There's no way that, you know, we can leave that part of our community out of this discussion.
I agree. Was the, is it the same railroad that owned the railroad southern, south of Fruitville?
Yes.
Okay. Why was it not incorporated in the original plan?
Because of their business environment. What they were looking at, I mean, as you know, Myrtle Street, they just expanded in regards to their operations at Myrtle Street. They make connections to some of their other routes that go out east, further up, and so in their business plan, that's where they felt they could stop and not have, oh, from a, from a business standpoint, Fruitville to the south was not in their business plans anymore. However, Fruitville North are in their business plans, and they do not have any desires to make any sale of the property.
Commissioner, they're saying that there are still commercial opportunities for them, even though it may not necessarily be right now, from Fruitville to the north. And so they, they have no interest in selling any part of their right-of-way, is what they've told us.
Hmm. Okay.
And they can still consider it an active railroad.
From what I understand, they don't have any actual clients south of Myrtle.
Well, that's not what they would tell us.
They just run the line once a week to keep it whatever, you know? Okay.
Commissioner Albert?
On the Boulevard of the Arts and 10th Street, you said that is fully funded or we're expecting a grant?
So we have approximately over 2 million in our match for a $6 million worth in grants right now. So as far as the city's match, city match for the grant, it is fully funded in that sense.
But, but it's not fully funded. It's, we still have a gap of 6.4 million that we're pursuing a grant, so it's not fully funded to, to complete the entire project.
Okay. And could that come from the multimodal transportation funds, or what are we looking at to fill the gap, or?
Getting a grant, but if we don't, if we're not successful in getting a grant, and that's what Mr. Patel was saying, if we hear in August, we'll come back to the commission to see, obviously something will have to come off of this list in order to find the additional money to complete that project. But we'll have to have a conversation with the commission on that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I said questions about parks up in District 1, like Rosemary, Rosemary Park, like where, where are we with that?
I believe that's moving forward. I, I'd have to leave that to, I, I don't know if Jerry's staff is here. Jerry's here. Thanks, Nick.
Jerry Fogel, Parks and Recreation, Vice Mayor. Yeah, we're moving forward. We are in the final process of the, finalizing the conceptual design for that. Then I will get that to the city manager's office to, to make sure they, they're good with everything, and then we'll move forward with the proposal from Kim Lee Horn to do the construction design.
Okay. Excellent, excellent. Now, how, how about Shenandoah Park, the open park here?
Shenandoah Park, we actually are looking at, I believe, next fiscal year to be able to possibly move forward with that. We have, we'll have to secure some park impact fees for that park to be able to do design and then do some construction for it, so.
Excellent. And Martin Luther Canyon Park, I know we've been talking about putting a kayak launch up there and walkway and lighting and, and, what, Wi-Fi and everything.
Yes, Wi-Fi is, I think, is, is next. I think Arlington, they're finishing up, then they're moving to MLK to do Wi-Fi. As far as the renovation improvements, that's another park that we are hoping to get to. Obviously, we have a lot on our plates, but the goal, the plan is to get to that next fiscal year. We want to improve the, the walking paths, so we want to increase and make sure they're ADA accessible. We want to add LED lights throughout the park, so we want to make sure it's, it's safe. We want to also meet with the community to determine, you know, whether or not they want fitness types of equipment there or playground, things of that nature. So we'll be meeting with the neighborhood association and community on that. Kayak launch is one of those things that we notified in the master plan, so we do plan on moving forward with that.
Now, the Orange Avenue Park improvements, where, where, Orange Avenue, what, what park is that?
That's, you know, that's right beside the, right up on Orange.
17th and Orange.
Yeah, 17th and Orange. It's, that one has a basketball court that's heavily utilized.
I was talking about where, where, where Amarillo's Park is. Oh, I figured that's where it was, but I was like, I mean, you know, I never really looked at it as a park. We never called that a park. And.
It's nice now. You guys really put a lot of money into it, looks good.
Well, the Orange Park, we haven't yet.
Oh, what's the one on?
Pioneer, Pioneer.
No, no, no.
Came to Mary Dean?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary Dean, we, we definitely, thank you for that, Commissioner.
And that's on Central.
Yes, yes.
And the park that I don't see on here is, is Water Tower Park?
North Water Tower Park is another one we're looking at. Like I said, I, I don't know if we can get to all of them next year. We have a position in the budget, a coordinator position to hopefully, if you approve it, will help us to implement some of these projects. But North Water Tower Park is another one. We're looking like a half basketball court and another playground for the kids, so we're looking to renovate that park also.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Couple questions.
Thanks, thank you very much, man, I appreciate it.
When it comes to capital improvements, like City Hall, where does that come from?
We do have a bucket in the CIP for City Hall and Annex improvements, but...
And what's the funding source on that?
To refund it, penny.
It all, it's all penny?
Because it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with transportation, which multimodal and gas taxes are that.
But it's a capital improvement, so it comes from the penny?
Mm-hmm. My, I guess it's more of a philosophical question, but the penny isn't guaranteed. So, you know, it's not gonna, they're guaranteed to go on forever, and so if, is there no other funding source? For example, if the penny doesn't get renewed whenever it's up, is there no other funding source for this, and we have to just kind of deal?
Yeah, we'll have to come back to the commission and really make some decisions in 2024. Let's see if this doesn't pass in November, all these projects that you see on Appendix B, we'll have to have a conversation as to how the commission wants to pursue them.
And then we're giving money to the, to the housing authority?
So, ma'am, that was approved under referendum previously. So, again, it's not the city necessarily giving money, it's the voters approving the distribution of those pennies for affordable housing.
Well, just, don't forget about District Three.
On our radar.
Commissioner, I got you.
Yeah, thank you. I had some questions along the same line as the Vice Mayor. So, Jerry, we recently spoke about this for Water Tower Park. I think it was probably four years ago when the commission decided, we had big, huge conversation about the stormwater there and making a basketball court for that area. You know, in my opinion, that should be elevated up to something that's more urgent than less urgent, just my opinion. It's a conversation we were having for four years, and I know resources are tight and everybody's vying for all of them, but, you know, when the, when, when we keep delaying something like that, I don't know, I think that that's something that just needs to be elevated. I don't think it was a whole lot of money to make that, those courts there, you know, at the south end of the Water Tower Park and the kayaking, the kayak facility at Martin Luther King. That's been, you know, something we're talking about for a while. I think there might be grant dollars for that available from some of the, you know, like maybe the Coastal Advisory Committee or some of the other nonprofits that their, their goals are to increase access to the waterways that are non-motorized, so there may be some grant dollars. You probably know that better than me, but that's also one that I would elevate. And Avion Park, it's going forward?
Yes.
Okay, I see the dollars there in 2223.
Yes.
But I want to make sure that's going forward, okay. And then the Fred Atkins Park, when you say have here enhancements to the existing parking, what is that exactly?
It's supposed to be the park.
Huh?
It's supposed to be enhancements to the existing park.
Okay, because I saw parking and I was like...
Yeah, park, sorry.
How do you enhance parking?
Thank you for the...
Okay, all right. And, okay, then those are CRA dollars, okay. Yeah. And then Shenandoah as well, there are no dollars there. I don't know, I just feel like sometimes when these conversations take place each year for years and years and years, I know we have limited funds and limited resources, but, you know, just, we've been talking about Water Tower Park for many years now, and MLK and kayak and canoe and access to the water, and I think those are all really good things that we should not lose sight of.
Commissioner, thank you. I just, really quickly, you know, I do appreciate that we, we do the best we can to, all of our parks are, have deferred maintenance, all of our parks need attention, and so, as you well know, with Lido, that, that took a lot of resources to get that back to where it needs to be, so we've completed that. Mary Dean, we've completed that. So, we are making our way through Fred Atkins, we've made improvements there, we've made improvements at Gillespie, so we are getting there, it's just, we have a lot of things going on on our plate, so if you bear with us a little bit, I think, you know, next two, three years, you'll see some really good results.
Yeah, you do an amazing job, the staff does an amazing job, really. Our, our parks are, you know, one of the most commented-on amenities that people talk about in our city. They always need maintenance. We did take them over pretty recently from the county, or were given them by the county, and so we had some catching up to do for some of our parks and our, you know, expensive, costly repairs and completely redoing Arlington and, yep, I know all of that. It's just, I know that there are many hands reaching out for the dollars. I just don't want us to lose sight of North Water Tower Park and, you know, the, the kids up in that area really could use a facility there at the south end and, you know, all the others, I won't be repetitive, but thank you, you do, you do a great job, and I know everybody's trying to reach out for any kind of grant dollars they can along the way, so thank you.
Just, just one, one comment, and when you mentioned the park impact fees and there are no dollars, obviously, as you're aware, we have to approach the county to make the request of those dollars, and one of the things that they have shared, shared with us is that we have to do it as part of their fiscal year budget. I really would like to have a conversation with the commission, kind of similar to when we used to have the transportation impact fee and took that over as a multimodal impact fee, to really have the park impact fees stay with the city instead of us collecting it, depositing it into the county, then having to make a request of the county to get those dollars. It's a long, laborious process, and we really need to have a conversation of having...
What would that look like?
We'll have to work with the city attorney's office to see how we can...
There's a process in the agreement.
It sounds like a big waste of time, and that would be way more efficient.
Yeah, so, we'll have that conversation.
More efficiencies, Mayor.
Commissioner Albert?
Just, I guess, sort of budget-related, but what, what can we do? What, what's happening in terms of publicizing to the public how important the extension of the penny sales tax is?
Really good question. With the recent law that was passed by the state, we can no longer advocate, we can no longer invite ourselves out to, to our sheer information about the penny we have to be invited in, but the, you know, there's nothing really we can do now outside, groups can do that, so I would say, you know, we have to be very careful in terms of, you know, what we do with regard to the penny.
So, outside groups could invite us to come and speak about it?
Correct.
Okay.
We can't spend money on it, correct?
Correct. Nor could we advocate for it or against it, or...
Just explain it.
You know, we can't.
You can't even explain it if that you're invited?
Correct.
You can't?
You can.
You can.
Can. Explain it if you're invited, but we can't spend money advocating for it.
Okay.
Your turn?
Mm-hmm.
Vice Mayor Batteev?
Oh, yeah, before I get to my question, I just want to say thank you, you all do a great job, just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Ahernkatz, you know, I think you all go far above and beyond, you know, the call of duty, man, to sort of make things happen in our parks, and like I said, I can't thank you enough, you know, we work and speak a lot, and again, my hat's off to you, man, and your department, and your leadership in your department, so thank you. And the question I have is, what about the, the, because I was talking about, at one point, I had a conversation with Mr. Brown and Mr. Fournier about like the extension of the CRA or whatever, but that's a whole, you know, different thing, or whatever, that involves the county and so on, so that's nixed. But, the sidewalks, or the proposal for sidewalks up above MLK, and I believe that's Lemon or Central?
Lemon.
Lemon, yeah, yeah.
We're in the process of looking at that and putting that in design. Actually, I think you're looking at grants, like, school connection grants and stuff of that nature to make that happen. And, you know, that's been a conversation also, I think, with the CRA board up in, the Newtown CRA board, about priorities, and that is one of their high priorities to try to address, so that's what we're looking at.
Excellent, excellent.
Now, part of that, too, is in the county, as you go on the other side of Myrtle Street, we have a connection there, and we are having conversations with county staff, but the same way, like us, it depends on when it falls in their funding programs in regards to it, but they, they are aware of that connection need, and they're working to see about that funding themselves.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
And just to piggyback on something, you know, Vice Mayor, you know, in terms of Parks and Rec, remember, they also take care of our medians, our public right-of-ways, et cetera, and again, all of that contributes to what really improves our quality of life and why people love being, you know, being in the city.
Yeah, and I said, I know you all stretched and, you know, you have limited resources, particularly in way of workforce and, and so on, you know, since we're talking about the budget, adding, you know, employees to the budget and conversations about that and the headache that that causes, you know, so, like, people take that in mind when they think about like, oh, why is it, you know, I mean, you know, the public, you know, why didn't they do this, or why didn't they do that, or whatever, you know, workforce and these departments being stretched. But again, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Jeffcoat, Mr. Patel, for the work you do, and Mrs. Strickland as well, thank you. And thank you, Mrs.
Commissioners, we've gone around about three times, let's, let's try to keep on task and just talking about any budgetary issues moving forward, because I know everybody here wants to have lunch, and we want to have that second meeting after the workshop, so if anybody has any final remarks, Commissioner Ahernkatz?
Just one more question that I wanted to ask earlier that I couldn't, about the penny sales tax. I just had one item on here that is on-premises, hyper-converged infrastructure. What is that?
That's an IT. Not even myself...
That's code for what?
It's one of the few things that'll qualify for the capital program right now. It is actually, as Hermanio says, it's a peach box that he has upstairs.
On-premises, hyper-converged infrastructure, I have no idea what that is.
We can definitely have Mr. Hermanio respond to you and that question.
Okay, thank you. And my only other comment was that it, I know we had, it was in part of where that I didn't ask again, sidewalk cleaning downtown, in the downtown of the city of Sarasota, there's a big demand for increased cleaning, is that noted in our budget?
That, that was included in the Streets and Highways budget to increase the level of service for that. If you look at our sidewalk line item there, and cleaning, you will see a substantial increase in...
I thought it was 25, I thought it was the same number all the way across the board.
That's in our gas tax side of it. We, because of where we are with our gas tax and where it stands, we didn't feel we could put that increase. We felt that the general fund had to be with the area that would take care of that.
Okay, so where is it noted?
It's gonna be in our Streets and Highways budget.
Okay.
And also the downtown improvement district also...
Also increased.
So...
I know they're contributing to it, but they also came to us and said that they wanted us to do it, too.
We do it outside of the...
If you will take, I mean, like I said, when you get...
Which tab is it, Mr. Strickland, do you know?
Streets and Highways?
Yeah.
Grab 12.
12?
12?
12. Where would that be, on which page?
It's probably, it's gonna be in the detail.
12 dash 7.
12 dash 7.
7, okay. Streets and Highways.
I know which, I'm not sure of the object code there. It's 560 something.
We have...
545?
Sidewalks, oh, I see, it's, oh, okay, wow, yes, it is increasing.
Okay.
Yep, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I have one more question for Mr. Fournier, and that is, like, multimodal, like, impact fee use requirements, how does that work?
Well, they're subject to what they call the dual rational nexus test, so that the, the need for the capital improvements that you spend the impact fees on has to be generated by the development that paid the fees, that's the first part, and the second part is the capital improvements have to actually benefit the development that paid the fees.
Okay, okay. Excellent, so, I guess that concludes our...
Yeah, so, so again, thank you, Mayor Commissioners, Vice Mayor Commissioners, for, you know, for, you know, spending, you know, two and a half days with us. I'll ask that we break for lunch, but give us until 3 o'clock, if we can have the special meeting starting at 3 o'clock, give us an opportunity to make sure we, we have responses to all the questions that you all asked, and that we'll, you know, convene to set the tentative mileage at 3 o'clock.
Ah, well, that concludes, uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, everybody's good with that? Make sure, okay?
All right, excellent, thank you so very much.
What time are we coming back?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock, back at 3 o'clock.
Why didn't we talk about Bobby Jones? Just, there's nothing.
It was only debt service.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, okay, go ahead.
All that being said, thank you all very much, did a great job.
Yeah, 3 o'clock.